Hi, my name is Indira Shumaker. My pronouns are she/her. And I'm running for the Ward one seat on Des Moines City Council for the upcoming November election. So basically, my story is that I've always been politically active, always been politically engaged. But I didn't really have a foothold until this summer when the protests started. And I saw people getting tear gas at the Capitol. And realized like something was really happening in Des Moines and I needed to be there. And I needed to step up. And so I did. And I started organizing with Des Moines BLM pretty early on. Started organizing with a brand new organization in August, More People's Town Hall. And most of what I was doing was organizing around city council meetings. So we're like organizing engagement. Getting information out there to people about what they were doing and just learned essentially how to read an agenda and what all the strange political legalese they were talking about was. Just kind of learned that by going through. And dissecting it and then passing that information on and getting people to show up to meetings. And pretty much like I showed up to the first meeting because I think partially and part CCI people at the protests and like other people in the community. Who were like pushing people to go to this June eight city council meeting because finally the racial profiling ordinance is going to be voted on. And I spoke up for the first time on that agenda item on June eighth. And then again, on June twenty second, I spoke three or four times, I think. On the racial profiling ordinance and realized essentially that they were trying to water down as much as they possibly could. They, you know, got overwhelming, like people wanting it to be stronger and decided they were just gonna pass it anyway. So I realized the city council doesn't really respond to the needs of the people, doesn't respond to the voice of people. And from that point, literally as early as June, I was like, oh, I should run for the seat that's open. So that's kind of where this whole journey started. And as I've organized more and more, I've like learned so much more how they work to limit public engagement, how they work to limit, you know, progress. And so that is why I'm running.
Sweet. Thank you for joining us, engaging in our process. And just to give a little context for this screening meeting, I think we've talked about it a little bit before. But this group of members, a bunch of key leaders of our team. They'll be walking through issues that we organize on and asking follow up questions that I have been informed by your answers to our questionnaire. So just asking follow up questions on the issues that we organize on. They will lead into these questions with talking about themselves and the issues they organize on. And then you'll have about three minutes to answer those questions. And there may be follow up questions. And with the follow up questions, there'll be about one minute to respond to those. But yeah, I think just to go ahead and just get started on these questions, I'll pass it over to Dart to ask a question about racial profiling and racial justice.
Great, Indira. Good morning. Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Beautiful, beautiful, beautiful. I'm a teaching artist. I know you appreciate art and artistic expression within this, within this struggle in life that we have. The reason I'm in CCI really briefly is because when I was, I'm Iowa born, my folks go back to the Buxton era eighteen ninety six when we first got here to Iowa. But when I was living in California, I just am checking with my Iowa friends. I saw Connie Boson and the school board at that time beginning to really, really screw over students, everything about what they were doing. And it really upset me. So when coming back to Iowa to check on my mother in the summers, when she still lived here, I saw, got to start seeing close up what the real deal was with these people. And that in my mind, nobody was stepping up to help. But I discovered, what is it now? Eight years ago, nine years ago, CCI. And they had one of Martin Luther King's top advisors who came to speak at the convention. A friend brought me to that convention and I finally went, here's my people. So long story short, that's why I'm here. And I'm so curious because I've watched you and I just want to know. As you see the police situation, we see our city council situation. How would you, when you get to sit on the council, how will you involve the business community more effectively? Because we know that the cops are protecting certain people more than others. And we know that there's a direct tie there. So I'm just curious about how you would start to approach the business community on the behalf of everybody.
Yeah, that's a good question. I think that something that we can do is start building up materials to like provide alternatives essentially to policing, right? Because it's true, like police exists more to protect property than to protect certain groups of people, right? And so that's going to be a harder sort of like bond to break in that situation where people aren't going to see it as much as like, well, why would I want to be, you know, like lessening police influence or lessening police interaction in these areas? But I think that something that was really interesting, actually, is I was on a neighborhood association meeting last night and someone from Come and Go is there talking about, oh, we've had a lot of robberies and assaults at our businesses in this area. And so they've implemented a lot of new like procedures, like surveillance procedures and just basically like reacting, you know, to that sort of thing. But they also said, like, people come to steal lottery tickets and tobacco products. And it's like that is, it kind of shows like this is a problem that is spurred on by something else, right? That is spurred on by like poverty or by needing like some kind of relief to some kind of problem. And so I think that by developing solutions to like those bigger overall problems, we're going to see less need for like these reactionary methods, these like policing methods and these surveillance methods and things like that. Because we're going to have like less people in desperate situations. So I think that if we can work from one side of, you know, like creating a better situation where we have like, you know, business, like people aren't going to be feeling as much like they need these services. And then also working from the other side and saying, here's some alternatives to these services. Here's like ways and like resources that we can interact more productively in these spaces. I think that that could be a helpful method to bring around that side of the community.
Thank you. Thank you. Now, just one other question before I move on. We all have experienced this kind of intractable, supposedly intractable problem of dealing with our city government. Scott Sanders, et cetera. So in, how would you, when you're there, both to kind of cover the idea of co-governing and also shaking up this impasse that we're at, what would you do to adjust our city governance structure, dealing, you know, seeing what you see at this point?
Yeah. So a lot of what I want to do starts with me, right? I want to be a lot more accessible council person. I want to like build up infrastructure for people to get feedback, but also build up this infrastructure for people to literally like, we're talking about co-governing, like, like, I want people to be like, to have decision making power in our government to come together, talk about the issues, come up with solutions. And then I want to be that representative of those solutions that people came up with of like, hey, there's this thing on the agenda and we need you to vote no. And like the majority of the people who are speaking to you are saying vote no, I'm gonna vote no, right? Things like that. But I think that building in, building up those systems and saying, hi, I'm going to be accountable to those systems. We're also going to be able to build from there and build up more systems of power in Des Moines for council members who aren't going to want to be accountable to those systems. But if you've got like the majority of someone's constituents, right, saying, hey, we came together, we were organized and we came together and met and said, here are issues, here are problems, then we told you, and then you went against us. In that, it's going to be a lot harder to say, oh, I'm representing the constituents. So I'm just doing, I'm representing the silent majority, something like that, right? So I think that building up those systems of power is going to be really, really essential. And then electing people who are going to be accountable to people's systems of power and not like corporate and, you know, like privileged systems of power. So that's what, that's what I want to work on. I think that a lot of it is going to be like flipping the council. Because I know that we need to not just flip the council, but also like flip the staff a little bit. So I think it's going to be, it's going to be a lot of work, but I want to do that work on the ground as well.
God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dart. And yeah, I think to ask a question about climate and climate action, I'm going to pass it over to Rob Marco Franks.
Hello, can you hear me all right? Okay, great. Hello, Indira. Thanks for being here. My name's Rob Marco Franks. I've been an Iowa CCI action member since two thousand eighteen, I think. So I was in Des Moines on the day of the derecho. I was getting ready for a weekly meeting, working remotely. So I was right there when, as the wind started howling, my power went off completely. My initial thoughts were how I would work for a couple of days without power because I couldn't return to the office. But that fear quickly turned, that turned to fear for my family and my partner in Iowa City, Marion and Bettendorf, as I learned more about the scope of this storm. As I walked around my neighborhood, because I wasn't able to work, I was able to see the damage that the storm wrought on my neighbors and community. And as I drove to visit my partner in Iowa City, I saw the damage wrought across the state with torn grain silos and trampled cornrows all along the highway. While staying with my partner, like many others, we had to walk somewhere else to charge our phones and access internet and to check daily how the power restoration was going. So Mid American's Energy Service Area covers nearly two thirds of Iowa and hundreds of thousands of Iowans. Many of them were left without power for weeks. And I'm not informed on how they prioritized which neighborhoods and cities would restore power first. But I can't imagine that such a powerful company would equitably respond to communities with the greatest need and who are at the greatest risk. The storm ran across the whole state and across state lines. So any solution or action we pursue must recognize that we need to act on a statewide scale to address the problem. You mentioned your interest in coalition building across the state with other cities and large customers of Mid American as a way to increase our leverage and power to push for a clean energy resolution and democratically controlled utilities. So will you support other cities passing climate resolutions like the one passed in Des Moines? And if yes, how so?
Absolutely, a hundred percent. I think that's something that is going to give us kind of like a foot to stand on to be building up like these, like networks of power to be pushing for these things that we need to be pushing for. I think that using like Des Moines as a template, even pushing even farther, because I think that the original resolution that was amended would be a little bit more powerful than the one that we have now, like the twenty thirty deadline and so the twenty thirty five. Having like negotiating power, things like that. But yeah, so I think that that's going to come down to like meeting with officials in other cities. It's going to come down to like presenting that idea, really, really advocating for it. And like you mentioned, across state lines as well, like, there's no reason that the Iowa border needs to limit us in how we are building power and networks and advocating for these changes. So I think that it really, it comes down to meeting with people in other, like Midwest towns and cities and saying, here, we have this. Does this interest you? Can we get you to pass something like this? Can we get you to pass something a little stronger? Finding out where people stand, finding out like where the power lies in those different areas. And not limiting to cities either. We can also focus on counties, municipalities, things like that, whatever would be the strongest way to achieve that.
Yeah, thank you for that. Yeah, as part of a follow up, I'm wondering how you will be an advocate for climate at the state level, especially with a governor and legislator who has not done very much to address the issue, to put it kindly.
Yeah. So I think that like the city has like a lobbying, you know, pathway already. And so it's pretty easy to say, I guess I'm going to lobby for these things through that pathway. But I think that unfortunately, a lot of our problems right now come down to electoralism. And just really getting people in the seats that are going to be fighting for these lifesaving things. Instead of literally doing the opposite and fighting against them and fighting for, you know, more damage. So I absolutely want to take that position of like lobbying at the state level for the things that we need to see achieved for climate justice. And I also think that it's going to come down to, we need to be supporting people to take over those seats that we lost, that we need to gain. And that might even include, like, I mean, I want to be coalition building across the state anyway. So it's going to be going out into like rural areas where we haven't seen as much, you know, impact and effort put into flipping those seats. Sometimes we just give them up. We'd say, oh, we're not even going to fight for this one. So I think going into rural areas as well. And really just trying to get the like landscape of people that we need to even start working on these sorts of things, but then also advocating in the meantime, because that's going to be really important.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Yeah, on the next issue that we're going to look at is on factory farms and clean water. I'm gonna pass it to Barb Kaba to introduce that question.
Hi, Indira. My name's Barb Kaba. I'm a fourth generation family farmer, a registered nurse, and a longtime member of Iowa CCI. Back in nineteen ninety five, before you were born, the Iowa Legislature wrote House File five nineteen into law. It allowed farmers to build huge buildings combining herds of poultry and hogs to race for slaughter. When I joined CCI in two thousand two, there were well over five thousand of what we call factory farms in the state of Iowa. Since all the manure created by these facilities was applied to the ground, Iowa also had two hundred and twelve impaired waterways, lakes and ponds. Residents of the state have fought against the factory farm model since its inception to no avail. We, the people, have lobbied and met with legislators every year asking for more regulation. We have had multiple meetings over the years with the regulating body, the Department of Natural Resources. The Des Moines Water Works brought a lawsuit against some northern counties for polluting the Raccoon River, which the Water Works had to clean at huge expense for Des Moines citizens to use. Over twenty years of effort and still, factory farms continue to build. Today, there are more than ten thousand factory farms in Iowa, creating multi millions of gallons of liquid manure that goes on Iowa soil every year. New permits to build more are being applied for every week. The two hundred and twelve impaired waterways, rivers, recreational lakes and ponds have ballooned to more than seven hundred and fifty. Now, the Raccoon River is ninth in the top ten national list of endangered waterways. The Des Moines River is hot on its heels. As drought intensifies, the water level shrinks and the pollutants are even more concentrated. These are the two rivers that Des Moines depends upon for water. Our lawmakers are silent and disinterested. Given the work that we've done at CCI on this issue, how would you be an advocate for clean water?
Thank you for that question. Yeah, this is something that I am still learning about, right? Like, I obviously see the effects of it. I used to work at Gray's Lake, actually, like down on the south side when I was working in the Parks and Recreation Department. And it's very, it says a lot to me that it was closed all summer, not because of the pandemic, but because of the pollution in the water. So it's something that is very, very important to be addressing. I think that, again, it's going to be going out and like supporting the work in the rural areas where these problems are like stemming from, right? I think that's going to be really, really important. What you're saying about like public officials being just uninterested, that is absolutely shocking to me. This is like one of the most basic things is like being a steward of the land. These resources are literally what we live on and we're so disconnected from that. So I think that just being an advocate, a lot is going to be like supporting the work that's happening to change these sorts of things. And I think that from Des Moines, taking whatever leverage and power we have as the capital and leveraging that to be changing these sorts of things. I think that Water Works, you know, with their lawsuits and this position to be doing that, I want to be supporting whatever they see fit. I think it's going to be taking the lead of people who are right, like on the front lines of these sorts of issues. But this is absolutely something I want to advocate for. I think that in the questionnaire, talking about the the like business interests, like investing in these recreational waterways things, I think that's going to be a point of leverage as well for us. Because it's become like such a big thing in Des Moines right now, that they're like building up all of these recreational facilities around the rivers. And it's just, they're not going to be habitable. So I think that that is going to be a big point of leverage. I want to find any point of leverage we can in Des Moines because this is something that I'm like, I know that this is, you know, a rural problem, but it's affecting literally everyone. And I'm like, what can I do from this position to really like force change on that issue? So I'm willing to look into any avenue. Have whatever discussions need to be had. That's something that I'm definitely looking forward to.
Well, your lobbying arm of the city council definitely needs to focus on that. And and the citizens of Des Moines, I mean, the cost to clean that water is going to get higher and higher and higher, which is going to be a big problem. So I think it's important for the lobbying arm in and of itself and educate the citizens of Des Moines, because there's your strongest, your biggest mouthpiece. And of course, you're right about the rural areas to reach out. They should be the biggest mouthpiece, but they're not, you know. So, but to educate Des Moines, the biggest citizen group that'll be impacted, boy, when you get into your pocketbook, it starts getting serious and it will get into their pocketbook.
Besides, it comes down to like, sorry?
Besides, we all like to drink water.
Of course. No, it comes down to like city communication and things like that. I think that there's been a huge lack in like communicating like important things to the residents of the city. And so I think that this is something that we could be pushing. And just, yeah, really bringing up that like educational piece, I think is going to be really important. Just communicating here, the things that we're dealing with. Here's something really, really serious. Even coming out publicly and taking a stance and saying like, hi, the DNR isn't doing enough, something like that, I think is going to be really, really powerful.
And your legislators. Yep, they have started speaking up. Thank you.
I agree.
Sweet. I think the next question on, is it going to be on co-governing? And Tom and Don's going to ask that question.
Thank you, Catherine. And good afternoon, Indira. So glad you could join us this afternoon. You know, I am a resident of Ward one, so I do send emails on a fairly regular basis to Bill Gray about one issue or another. And I have to say, Bill is very responsive. I almost always get an email back from him. And I usually get one within, you know, within twenty four, forty eight hours. But the one thing I'm not getting back from him is is the follow up, because generally he'll say something and I'm going, yeah, that doesn't solve that and end the issue here. Like either like, I can't do anything about that, or he'll say something like, well, that's somebody else's problem, or, you know, he, you know, it always seems to be about him not doing anything. And so then I'll say, well, what about this and this and this and this? All right, if you don't want to be creative, I can be creative and come up with lots of really great ideas about things you could do. And then I don't hear anything. So I was intrigued a little bit by your answer to some of Dart's questions around co-governance. And the idea of setting up infrastructures. So there could be multiple means of engagement and feedback. So that there wasn't just one way in which residents of Ward one could get their views passed on or felt within the decision making process, which is the Des Moines Council. And, and, you know, I was really struck too by, there was an article that came out in the, I think it was two days ago in the NBC News had an article that featured you. But it also featured Carl Boss, another current city, at large city member. And he was quoted as saying, this is our meeting, referring, this is not their meeting. So, so that gives a little bit of an insight into the level of how the current city government, current city council considers co-governance. Like how they view it. And then more recently, our racial justice team has been meeting with a couple of city council members. And we had one exchange with Josh Mandelbaum, who's also a current member from Ward three, I think it is. And one of the points that Josh made in his comment was, you know, he was saying, well, if you guys would do this, and it would be helpful if this happened. And so then in response to that, I said, well, that sounds like co-governance. And here's my thoughts about co-governance. And, and, and it was sort of like, yeah, now I'm getting it. Like, 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 he didn't say that. He didn't acknowledge it. He didn't affirm it. So I guess my question back to you then is, if you want to expand a little bit more on your notions of co-governance and how it might make some of the frustrations that I've been feeling in, in looking at the city council and its responsiveness. What, how do you view that? And how do you view CCI particularly as a partner in co-governance?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to pause this really quick. I don't know if anybody heard. I made a face though. There are some cats fighting right next to me, making a little noise. And I didn't want to disturb anybody. But back to your question, I am really excited to talk about this because I'm actually surprised to hear that you get responses from Bill Gray so much because I literally had to bang on his door. And that is the one conversation I had with him. And it followed exactly that format of, oh, I can't do anything about that. And so when I'm thinking about co-governance, I like, it was one of the first things on my mind when I was considering running. I was like, so how, like, the problem is that they don't listen to people. So how do we actually build up a structure to make that happen? And so like, just personally, what I want to be doing is like opening up, like, you know, times to talk to people, pushing for like town halls, special meetings, things like that, but also just saying like, oh, I have open office hours. I'm out in the community. Come talk to me, things like that. But the structures that I want to build up are, it's literally a people's council. So it's people being able to exert governing power from the bottom up. And I think that CCI's role in something like that is literally just being on the forefront of that. CCI is already set up for co-governance, right? And so CCI can come in and say, hi, we're going to be the example for what everyone else can do. We're going to be like interacting in this way. We're going to be coming in and being in these meetings. We're going to have meetings with this council person. Who can then go ahead and exert the will for people, right? Because I think that the, what the issue that we run into right now is that we have representative government that isn't actually representative at all. And so what I want to be doing is being that true representative and which means being in touch with what people need all the time. And so I think organizations like CCI can like, like not only be on the forefront of that, but help build up systems like that. I think it's going to be very, very important to build up strong infrastructure for things like that. And I don't want to go over time, but I could talk about the people's council and the structure of that a little bit more because it's really like, I, it's important. I think that it is not the same kind of top down structure where you can get people who are like, okay, I'm at this high seat in it and they can be corrupt and be in the same situation that we're in with the city council where a few people are representing a lot. It's going to have to be like literally from the bottom up grassroots, people coming together, like a free assembly of people with no like, you know, like unmovable, like high ranking type of people in those positions. But then going through and like, not only just coming to the city council, but also implementing those solutions in their own neighborhoods where there isn't the restriction from the city council. And then having my role being like removing those restrictions or getting support or resources or policies in place to support the will of the people. Does that answer the question a little bit?
Yeah, no, it absolutely does. And just one thought, run on that.
Yes, yes, I am.
Run on that.
Absolutely. It's main, the main, the main like focus of my campaign is building up these councils. Win or lose, it's what I'm doing. But we want to be doing it through the campaign and then continuing to get on and like literally changing the face of government in Des Moines. Like completely restructuring government in Des Moines.
All right, let me turn it over to Catherine then. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom. I have time for one more question. So I'll pass it over to Pootie.
Hi, Indira. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, so my name is Pootie. I'm a lifelong resident of Des Moines, Iowa, and a child of immigrants from Laos, as well as other Southeast Asian, like other Southeast Asian communities here in the Des Moines area. And I had a question in regards to what your take would be. So there's a rise in hate crimes against Asian Americans across the country ever since the start of COVID. Where many people, including women and elderly, have been harmed by being thought of as like a nuisance or a disease. And the reason why COVID has like has started and why the economy has gone down. And that's put in a lot of fear of a lot of Asian American communities, public safety. And I know that you have a lot of ideas about how you're going to change public safety. And I was wondering, what, how would you include Asian Americans in your vision for a better public safety for all in Des Moines? Especially when there would probably be a lot of education needed in Asian communities where English might not be their first language. And they escaped political persecution in their home country. And they might not know, they might not know who to turn to when they witness like a hate crime or domestic abuse assault. So how would you include Asian American communities and other minorities in your public safety plan?
Yeah, so I think that the first like thing that's really important about any kind of issue similar to this is like, like, how do you include this group of people is you include them in discussions and the decision making and the solutions, right? So we need to say like, like you're the experts on your situation. So what is it that you need? And how can we provide that? I also think that a big issue that we have, like something we don't get to talk about a lot in public safety is not only like, we talk a lot about the problems that we have in public safety, but we don't get to talk a lot about the solutions. And the solution is really building up community public safety, right? And the solution is really building up community public safety, right? So like, people are not like okay with what's happening, right? A lot of people like outside of the Asian American communities are like, hey, that's really, really bad and I wish I could do something about it, but just don't know what to do. And so building up those structures to give people that avenue to say, hey, you can go protect somebody right now. You can like be on call if there's an incident to show up, to support people, to keep people safe. But like just building up those structures with the like guidance and the leadership of the people who are in these situations, who are the experts on. Um what they need and saying like, okay, so you get to decide what you need and we get to support you there. Um so I think that's going to be really, really important. And then with language barriers, it's very much just about meeting people where they're at. It's about like finding people in the community who can go out and communicate because public, like political education is. A a big thing that we need to do like across the spectrum, right? And so it's very much like, we're talking about outreach to like underserved communities. A lot of that is because there's just, it's only in English, right? And so the outreach is going to be like finding people who speak the language and who can do that work and who are passionate about that. And organizing in their own communities, not bringing someone in from outside to tell people what is best for them and what they need to do essentially.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you, Pootie. Um and yeah, I think with, I know we want to close out by, I think, six fifteen. So in like a minute or two, if there's any like um closing remarks or anything that you want um us as as a group of members to know. Um before um we talk about next steps, um this is, this is uh, this is your time.
Sure, yeah, just in general, I have been very impressed with CCI. In the time that I've been following the work that you guys do and I just, I really just see it lining up. Like with the vision that I have lining up with the vision that CCI has. Um before I really understood like what CCI was, I was already thinking about these methods of co-governance. I was already thinking about like solving all of these issues that we need to be solving. Um and really, it's all rooted back in that co-governance and people power and building up those structures. Um so that we can have an influence over these, you know, really, really strong, powerful um. Systems that are in place. Um and so once I started seeing like, here's what CCI believes, here's what CCI is fighting for, I was like, okay, cool, I agree with all of that. That's exactly what I'm trying to do. So um I'm just really glad to have talked to all of you today. Some faces I recognize, some faces I didn't. And uh I'm just excited for moving forward. Like, no matter how anything goes, I know that we're going to be working alongside each other, so I'm excited for that.
Wonderful, thank you, Indira. Um and yeah, as as far as like next steps for our team. Um on this Saturday, we'll come together and uh walk over our our thoughts and. Um what what we think about each candidate that we've talked to. Um and then make recommendations of endorsement or 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 no endorsement for the candidates that we've talked to. And those recommendations then go to our C four board. And then they either approve or deny those recommendations. Um so that all being said, you know, our team will be doing a lot of um, you know, uh debriefing and talking through what we think. Um but beyond that, as far as uh what what you need to know is like, we'll just keep you informed as our teams make a decision. Um but I think the biggest thing is just like, um right now, um we really appreciate you taking time to both answer our questionnaire. And also take time to meet with us today. Yeah, we really.
I enjoyed it.